Good evening, welcome to Springford Area School District Board Meeting. Today is Monday, September 15th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Springford Board of School Directors believes the community has the right to bring before the board issues and concerns they may have about items on the agenda or about items in general which affect the district or their children. Because of this belief and philosophy, the board will schedule a time at the beginning and conclusion of every meeting to have an opportunity for community members to share their concerns with the board. At the start of the meeting, members from the public may comment on agenda items only. The school board will move through the meeting agenda, then at the end, when prompted, there will be a time for public comment. This meeting is being filmed to be broadcast on community cable channels and online. Individuals intending to make public comments should be aware that they are being filmed. Speakers will be asked to state their name in the area in which you reside before your comment.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending. Ms. Schmidt, can we have a roll call?
In person, we have Mr. Lackey, Mrs. Westwood, Mrs. Goldsmith, Mrs. Weingarten, Mrs. Hermans, Mrs. Deardorff, Mr. Jackson, and Dr. Wright. Online on Zoom, we have Dr. Sharma.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Sharma, I will do my best to defer to you, but of course, if you just want to interject or speak, raise your hand, and I'm sure Mr. Peretti will make me aware. Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Scanlon, do you have any announcements for today?
Just a couple of announcements about upcoming meetings. We are moving our, our school board meeting from the 22nd of September to the 29th. That's due to the Rosh Hashanah holiday that begins at sundown that evening, so we are advertising for that change. In October, we also have a meeting scheduled on October 20th. We're moving that to October 21st. That is a work session, and that is because of the Diwali holiday, and I'm also told there is a big Halloween parade in town that evening as well. So for, for two reasons, we will, we will move that work session to the 21st, and we will advertise those meetings accordingly.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to public to be heard. This can be on agenda items only, so if you wish to speak, please approach a podium with your name and township of residence, as well as the agenda item for which you're referencing. Seeing as no one is approaching the podium, we will move on to our board and committee reports, and we will start with Ms. Gupta and Mr. Trover with our student representative report.
All right, thank you, everyone. Hope everyone has, is having a wonderful beginning to their school year. This is our September student rep report. So, starting off with our past events, we had a special board meeting on August 20th to talk about some restructuring in the district, some bigger decisions to be made, and then on August 25th, we had our first day of school for all students, so everybody got to come in and have their first day, and the district has been open ever since. And then, our district was actually closed on September 1st for Labor Day, so I hope everyone had a safe travels if they were traveling, or just a wonderful Labor Day weekend. And then, we had the Class of 2026 Parent FPC presentation on September 3rd. There was Picture Day for grades nine to 12 on September 5th, and for 12th grade, that was their ID Day. And then, we had ACT testing being administered here on September 6th, which was a Saturday. And then, on September 9th, we had both the Class of 2025 Graduation Assembly and the Class of 2027 Class Ring Assembly. I just realized that those dates are wrong, so there was Class of 2026 Graduation, and then Class of 2028 should have had their Class Ring Assembly. I was definitely there. It was a little scary, because graduation is coming soon, but yeah, it was really amazing to see the end finally. We also had, we also had SAT testing on September 13th, and then back-to-school nights for K to 12, just scattered throughout the week for different elementary schools in different grades. So now I'm going to hand it off to Jason for our future events.
Hello, everybody. For future events, on Wednesday, September 17th, we have the College Career Fair. On September 18th, we have the Open House for grades 10 through 12. Marching Band Home Show will be on September 20th, and there is no school for students on September 23rd for Rosh Hashanah. The district will also be closed on October 2nd for Yom Kippur, and on September, no, I'm sorry, October 4th, the SAT testing will be happening, and October 8th, we will have PSAT testing. From October 6th to, 6th to the 10th, Homecoming Spirit Week will be going on. The Powderpuff Football Game will also be going on on October 10th. The 9th and 10th Grade Homecoming Dance will be on Friday, October 10th, as well as the Homecoming Parade and Football Game on Saturday, October 11th. The 11th and 12th Grade Homecoming Dance will be on October 11th as well. Spring City Elementary School Ribbon Cutting will be on October 14th, and there is also no school, no school for students on October 20th for Diwali.
All right, thank you, Jason. And then, just a few quick reminders, continue to read the weekly update for district-wide news, and then, for all students, keep up with your weekly assignments. Thank you so much, and I hope everyone has a great day.
Thank you both. It's always exciting, lots going on the first, the first couple of months of the year.
Let me ask you a question. First, how many colleges do we have come for that College Career Fair, do we know?
I'm not sure exactly like the number, but I know there's a lot of colleges from over the country coming to speak to students, so I believe you sign up through a link sent on the weekly update for, like, the district-wide news, and yeah, there'll, there'll just be a lot of, like, representatives from different colleges across the country for students to ask questions.
And more importantly, not more importantly, but as important, who's the defending champ on the Powderpuff Football Game? Is there a defending champ coming into that game for, for homecoming?
I'm not sure.
It's a lot of fun.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
I am going to be in attendance at that College and Career Fair, and I will say that, you know, everything I've seen, it looks like it's a really easy process for those 10th-grade parents, 11th-grade parents, and so forth, that are still deciding, you can sign up, get your QR code, and, you know, just go from table to table and get information. So, thank you.
I just want to say, I know last year, there were probably more than 30 colleges there, but the, the FPC said that their list of colleges will be finalized, and they'll send out a list prior to the meeting.
Ms. Crew, are you jumping in back there?
Yep, as of 3:30 this afternoon, they're at 100, but they anticipate adding about 15 more by Wednesday.
Thank you. I'll see you there.
Okay. Moving on to extracurricular, Mrs. Deardorff.
The Extracurricular Committee met on Tuesday, September 2nd. We had a presentation from the National Honor Society students, as well as Ms. Coleman, was in attendance, who was their advisor, kind of explained to the board the rigorous steps that students have to take, starting in their freshman year to get into NHS, and the various ways that they contribute back to our community and our schools with their volunteer, volunteerism. So, as a, as a parent and as a board member, it's really interesting to hear that, because my kids are younger, their oldest is in sixth grade. So, again, always a point of pride whenever we get to hear from our students at extracurricular and about the amazing things that they're doing here at Springford. We also had a presentation from Mr. Miscavige about fall sports. We have about 459 students in fall sports this year. The district also received a grant from the Springford Youth Basketball Association in the amount of $12,500 to get a new scoreboard for the ninth-grade gym that they use for so many of our games. So, thank you so much to youth basketball for that donation, and look forward to getting that new score, scoreboard installed, which I know has been very much needed. So, we're always appreciative of our community partners for that. And then, Mr. Jones did a comprehensive list of upcoming events here in the fall, just like Mr. Drover did as well. The only thing that I think I have to add to the, your list is the Fall Play, November 14th and 15th, The Wizard of Oz. Am I allowed to say that? I hope so. I hope I didn't just blow that up for everyone, but very much looking forward to that. And that was it. Any questions?
No. Thank you, Mrs. Deardorff. Mrs. Goldsmith, policy.
The policy meeting, committee meeting met on September 8th, 2005. We discussed Policy 240, which was scholarships. It will be going for our first read in October. We also discussed Policy 831, and Admin did a great job of finding the impetus for this report, which involved a discreet technical report issued by medical assistance, I think, many, 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 many years ago, and was recommended for retirement. That will be going to the solicitor just to double-check that recommendation. We also discussed Policy 223, which is the use of bicycles, motor vehicles, and skateboards. There were some recommendations made to that. In addition, that's going to be reviewed by the solicitor for some issues in terms of the fact that we have onsite police department as well. So, it'll come back for a second review to committee in October. The next committee meeting will be meeting on October 13th, 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Goldsmith. Any questions or comments? Okay, moving on to curriculum and technology, Mr. Lackey.
Thank you. Curriculum and Technology met on Monday, September 8th. A number of items were discussed. For curriculum, Dr. Gardi provided information related to the curriculum review scheduled for 25-26. Additional information will be provided at upcoming Curriculum and Technology Committee meetings. Dr. Reinheimer provided 2025 results for the civics assessment. The result, the results can be found on the district's website. The results are also reported to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Dr. Provide, Dr. Gardi also provided information on the requested supplemental reading resources for high school ELD programming. And Dr. Murray provided committee, the committee information related to the cost of the AP exams over the last five years. The administration will provide additional information to the committee once the enrollment for the 25-26 AP testing is completed later this school year. For technology, Dr. Hill provided department updates for work that was completed related to systems, devices, and trainings. The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 13th at 7:00 in the district office. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just, just one, I was on Zoom, we did that. Did Dr. Hill mention the E-Rate funding in that meeting? I thought he did.
He did, and we are being reimbursed for that, or we have, actually.
Yes, E-Rate was, was approved, we did submit, and we were being reimbursed for $149,000 worth of expenses that are E-Ratable, yes.
Thank you. And I also just want to thank Dr. Hill and his team, because I know that the start of the school year, and even leading up to the start of the school year is especially busy for technology, but if I heard correctly, I think that, like, as far as, like, the staff, they were all set with their devices, all set with everything, and it seemed like it was very smooth sailing. I know even Chromebook distribution at the fifth and ninth grade oftentimes can be chaotic, so I've seen that, you know, in the past. I actually attended two of them last year, so thank you to you and your team, Dr. Hill.
Thank you. It was always a team effort, and the efforts of the tech team are appreciated.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other comments, moving on to finance, Mrs. Westwood.
Good evening. The Finance Committee met on Wednesday, September 10th in the district office. We went over old business, so executive monthly reports, these numbers are through the end of August 2025. We have 145.5 million cash on hand. State revenue shortage is resulting from the state budget not yet being approved, and local tax collections were $27 million higher than the prior year during the discount period. Expenditures for the first two months are in line with expectations. Assessments are down for the start of the year due to commercial property appeals, as discussed previously. For transfer taxes, we received 29.1% of the budget in two months. Earned income tax is an increase of 150K from the prior year-to-date, so a 6.25% increase. For self-funded health insurance, which I know we've talked a lot about in the past, first two months of the year, so far, is looking good. Food service, when we met, was only five days in, so it was a little too soon to report trends. I imagine we'll have more to say next month when I do the report. For new business, what we discussed, we discussed the 2026-2027 budget timeline. In case folks were not at the meeting, the Act 1 index for this year is set at 3.5%. Dr. Scanlon reviewed the draft capital plan timeline and related work and analyses to be performed to make an informed decision. The target is March 2026 to make that decision. We have a newer assessment appeal at 410 Linfield Trap Road, that is on the board agenda this evening. It's 6.92 million, settlement with a tax impact of 11K decrease per year. There's also, this is also on for tonight, to discuss food service worker hours. There's changes in staff for a couple of workers based on operating needs, they are minimal, I'd say, at high level. I think I went through the items that are going to be discussed at the next board meeting, but just real quick, a couple I didn't mention. We did decide, as a committee, to recommend moving forward by readdressing the accounting manager position at the work session today. You will see that on the agenda for conversation. Talked about the assessment appeal, and then just the food service work hour changes. The next meeting will be October 14th at 6:00 PM in the district office. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Westwood, and we will absolutely get to that conversation, that action item, which actually falls under personnel, not finance, but as promised in committee, we will make sure we dedicate some time to discussion. Okay, moving on, Mr. Jackson, finance, property, excuse me.
I will present at the next meeting. I will present at the next meeting.
We are presenting at the next meeting. My apologies, did not hear you. Moving on to Dr. Wright, MCIU.
Thank you very much. Just a moment. The MCIU Executive Board meeting was on August 27th. There are a couple of events that were occurring. The Education Foundation for the MCIU is doing a Vostok Shopping Night with a special discount, so that's October 22nd. If anyone is familiar with those, you pay $5, it goes to the MCIU. You can shop all day on October 22nd and get 25% off your entire purchase, so great time to get your Christmas shopping there, so I'll have that information available. I'll get that to Mrs. Crew to maybe put out for us. And also, the MCIU is doing a trivia night on November 7th, so if the board would like to do that, have some fun, and raise money for the Education Foundation for the MCIU, I will gladly support you, be there. The Director of Human Resources did a presentation, which included information on staffing. They have 200 new hires, 65 status changes, 130 staff that have either left or retired, 100 leave of absences, seven, well, 100, I'll just leave it at that. Really, one of the reasons I bring that up is because we are continuing concerned about funding for the MCIU, and I want you to understand what a vital program it is. The Dr. Speaker did a presentation on the goals. We also, as an IU, we, we approved a $15 million revenue anticipation note of ran resolution. The funds are for the sole purpose of continuing MCIU operations until the state budget impasse ends, and the funds currently being withheld when the state are released. So, basically, what that means is that the MCIU get, is, you know, funded, if the funding doesn't come through, if the state budget does not pass, we are prepared to borrow that money so that we can continue operations. We're prepared to pull that trigger, probably, we're looking at
As a parent and as a board member, it's really interesting to hear that because my kids are younger, their oldest is in sixth grade. So again, always a point of pride whenever we get to hear from our students at extracurricular and about the amazing things that they're doing here at Spring Ford. We also had a presentation from Mr. Miscavige about fall sports. We have about 459 students in fall sports this year. The district also received a grant from the Spring Ford Youth Basketball Association in the amount of $12,500 to get a new scoreboard for the ninth grade gym that they use for so many of our games. So thank you so much to youth basketball for that donation and look forward to getting that new scoreboard installed, which I know has been very much needed. So we're always appreciative of our community partners for that. And then Mr. Jones did a comprehensive list of upcoming events here in the fall, just like Mr. Drover did as well. The only thing that I think I have to add to your list is the fall play, November 14th and 15th, the Wizard of Oz. Am I allowed to say that? I hope so. I hope I didn't just blow that up for everyone, but very much looking forward to that. And that was it. Any questions?
No. Thank you, Mrs. Deardorff. Mrs. Goldsmith, policy.
The policy meeting, committee meeting met on September 8th, 2005. We discussed Policy 240, which was scholarships. It will be going for our first read in October. We also discussed Policy 831, and Admin did a great job of finding the impetus for this report, which involved a discreet technical report issued by medical assistance, I think, many, 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 many years ago, and was recommended for retirement. That will be going to the solicitor just to double check that recommendation. We also discussed Policy 223, which is the use of bicycles, motor vehicles, and skateboards. There were some recommendations made to that. In addition, that's going to be reviewed by the solicitor for some issues in terms of the fact that we have onsite police department as well. So it'll come back for a second review to committee in October. The next committee meeting will be meeting on October 13th, 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Goldsmith. Any questions or comments? Okay, moving on to curriculum and technology, Mr. Lackey.
Thank you. Curriculum and Technology met on Monday, September 8th. A number of items were discussed. For curriculum, Dr. Gardi provided information related to the curriculum review scheduled for '25, '26. Additional information will be provided at upcoming Curriculum and Technology Committee meetings. Dr. Reinheimer provided 2025 results for the civics assessment. The results can be found on the district's website. The results are also reported to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Dr. Gardi also provided information on the requested supplemental reading resources for high school ELD programming. And Dr. Murray provided committee, the committee information related to the cost of the AP exams over the last five years. The administration will provide additional information to the committee once the enrollment for the '25, '26 AP testing is completed later this school year. For technology, Dr. Hill provided department updates for work that was completed related to systems, devices, and trainings. The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 13th at 7:00 in the district office. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just one, I was on Zoom, we did that. Did Dr. Hill mention the E-Rate funding in that meeting? I thought he did.
He did. And we are being reimbursed for that, or we have actually.
Yes, E-Rate was approved, we did submit, and we were being reimbursed for $149,000 worth of expenses that are E-Ratable, yes.
Thank you. And I also just want to thank Dr. Hill and his team because I know that the start of the school year and even leading up to the start of the school year is especially busy for technology. But if I heard correctly, I think that like as far as like the staff, they were all set with their devices, all set with everything, and it seemed like it was very smooth sailing. I know even Chromebook distribution at the fifth and ninth grade oftentimes can be chaotic. So I've seen that, you know, in the past. I actually attended two of them last year. So thank you to you and your team, Dr. Hill.
Thank you. It was always a team effort, and the efforts of the tech team are appreciated.
Thank you. All right. If there's no other comments, moving on to finance, Mrs. Westwood.
Good evening. The finance committee met on Wednesday, September 10th, in the district office. We went over old business, so executive monthly reports. These numbers are through the end of August 2025. We have $145.5 million cash on hand. State revenue shortage is resulting from the state budget not yet being approved, and local tax collections were $27 million higher than the prior year during the discount period. Expenditures for the first two months are in line with expectations. Assessments are down for the start of the year due to commercial property appeals as discussed previously. For transfer taxes, we received 29.1% of the budget in two months. Earned income tax is an increase of $150K from the prior year-to-date, so a 6.25% increase. For self-funded health insurance, which I know we've talked a lot about in the past, first two months of the year so far is looking good. Food service, when we met, was only five days in, so it was a little too soon to report trends. I imagine we'll have more to say next month when I do the report. For new business, what we discussed, we discussed the 2026, 2027 budget timeline. In case folks were not at the meeting, the Act 1 index for this year is set at 3.5%. Dr. Scanlon reviewed the draft capital plan timeline and related work and analyses to be performed to make an informed decision. The target is March 2026 to make that decision. We have a newer assessment appeal at 410 Linfield Trap Road that is on the board agenda this evening. It's $6.92 million settlement with a tax impact of $11K decrease per year. There's also, this is also on for tonight, to discuss food service worker hours. There's changes in staff for a couple of workers based on operating needs. They are minimal, I'd say, at high level. I think I went through the items that are going to be discussed at the next board meeting, but just real quick, a couple I didn't mention. We did decide as a committee to recommend moving forward by readdressing the accounting manager position at the work session today. You will see that on the agenda for conversation. Talked about the assessment appeal and then just the food service work hour changes. The next meeting will be October 14th at 6:00 PM in the district office. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Westwood, and we will absolutely get to that conversation, that action item, which actually falls under personnel, not finance, but as promised in committee, we will make sure we dedicate some time to discussion. Okay, moving on, Mr. Jackson, finance, property, excuse me.
I will present at the next meeting. I will present at the next meeting.
Oh, okay. We are presenting at the next meeting. My apologies, did not hear you. Moving on to Dr. Wright, MCIU.
Thank you very much. Just a moment. The MCIU executive board meeting was on August 27th. There are a couple of events that were occurring. The Education Foundation for the MCIU is doing a Vostok shopping night with a special discount, so that's October 22nd. If anyone is familiar with those, you pay $5, it goes to the MCIU. You can shop all day on October 22nd and get 25% off your entire purchase. So great time to get your Christmas shopping there. So I'll have that information available. I'll get that to Mrs. Crew to maybe put out for us. And also, the MCIU is doing a trivia night on November 7th. So if the board would like to do that, have some fun, and raise money for the Education Foundation for the MCIU, I will gladly support you. Be there. The Director of Human Resources did a presentation which included information on staffing. They have 200 new hires, 65 status changes, 130 staff that have either left or retired, 100 leave of absences, seven, well, 100, I'll just leave it at that. Really, one of the reasons I bring that up is because we are continuing concerned about funding for the MCIU, and I want you to understand what a vital program it is. The Dr. Speaker did a presentation on the goals. We also, as an IU, we approved a $15 million revenue anticipation note of ran resolution. The funds are for the sole purpose of continuing MCIU operations until the state budget impasse ends, and the funds currently being withheld when the state are released. So basically, what that means is that the MCIU is funded, if the funding doesn't come through, if the state budget does not pass, we are prepared to borrow that money so that we can continue operations. We're prepared to pull that trigger. Probably, we're looking at the end of November or into December. We at the MCIU are in much better shape than many of the other intermediate units across the state. So just to kind of give you a heads up about the fact that how this budget does also impact that, there was also, and not to step on legislative committee, but there have been hearing impaired and blind education resources at the federal level that have been pulled, threatened to be pulled from other states. So we are concerned because all of that comes through our MCIU. So there are some concerns about that. We did send out the MCIU a letter to Governor Shapiro on behalf of all of the IUs in the state about the budget, the growing crises of the budget being delayed. Also, cyber charter reformed, reform in Montgomery County. Districts are paying to cyber charter schools, $11,865 to $24,327 per regular ed student. Meanwhile, the locally operated cyber schools, specifically the one that comes through the MCIU, it costs approximately $5,700 to educate a cyber student. So the Commonwealth, what we are asking the IUs and the districts to is that there be a flat $8,000 per cyber tuition rate for regular ed students. This would save schools in Pennsylvania $12.45 million. Specifically, it would save Spring Ford. If we went to an $8,000 flat, which is, remember, over $2,000 more than it costs to educate a cyber charter student in a cyber charter school, it would save us approximately $634,192.92. So that is money that could be used to invest in high-quality education here in our schools that, I just wanted to make you aware of that. So that was our request that was sent on behalf of all the IUs, and we continue to go and speak at Harrisburg. Our next meeting is September 24th. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. Any questions or comments? Okay. Moving on to our Assistant Superintendent's report.
Good evening. The Spring Ford girls volleyball team pulled off an epic five-set thriller last week, taking down three-time defending champ Pope John Paul II, and snapping their 80-match winning streak that stretched all the way back to 2021. So let's hear it for our Rams. Secondly, the community is invited to support the Spring Ford Booster Club on Thursday, September 25th, from 12:00 to 8:00 PM, with a dine and donate event hosted at Loc 29 in Montclair. Mention the Booster Club, and funds from your meal will benefit the Booster Club. The Booster Club supports all students, athletes, and sports through grades seven through 12 with the athletic awards night, scholarships, championship recognition, and more. That is the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. G.
Good evening. Families with students in grades five through 12 are reminded to pay their device insurance fee through school pay for their school-issued devices. Families who pay the annual $25 device insurance fee will be covered for all necessary repairs, of course, unless it's been deemed by the technology department that the damages were caused intentionally or by extreme negligence. Families who do not pay the $25 insurance fee may be required to pay for any repairs that are deemed necessary. So this is definitely a great service that's offered to help anticipate any of the needs that arise and keep our devices in good shape. We are also excited to share that for anyone who may be attending the PSBA conference in October, you'll get the opportunity to hear our high school select strings as they've been selected to play at this conference. Under the leadership of Emily McGrannahan, we know that our students will continue to make Spring Ford proud. Finally, a few weeks ago, I had the opportunity to be a guest on RamCast where we discuss the upcoming Social Emotional Learning, or SEL, Universal Screener. The SEL Universal Screener is something that we've been planning for, for over a year now. This is a brief questionnaire that students in grades two through eight will take, and when I say brief, it is very brief, meaning that it will take about 10 minutes or less for students to complete. Similar to how academic assessments are used to determine instructional needs, the screener will help schools identify ways to support students' social, emotional, and behavioral needs that may impact assessment success. The 20 questions are broken into three categories, social behavior, academic behavior, and emotional behaviors, and will be answered by selecting sometimes, often, almost always, or never. Students will see questions such as, "I argue with others," "I get along with peers," "I have trouble working alone," or "I feel nervous." We're working on being transparent and informative to our families on this, so families are encouraged to go to the district website and review all of the information that's posted. Here, they can see a complete list of the questions that are being asked, as well as information such as how the data will be used, the importance of the partnership with families, and what to do if they do not want their child to take this questionnaire. The information is being posted also regularly in the weekly update, and there's a parent letter, as well as the RamCast that I encourage all families to view or listen to. I'd like to thank Erin Crew and Andrew Rothmel for their opportunity to be guests on the podcast so we can share this important information out to families. And that is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. Thank you, Dr. G. I'll just say, you know, the SEL screener, I did get a chance to watch your podcast, I guess, or Ram Country TV episode, but I just want to say how pleased I am personally, and I'm sure, you know, I don't like to speak for the board, I'm sure it's felt broadly that, you know, this is another example of like steps that the administration is taking to support those comprehensive plan goals that we, you brought forward, the administration brought forward, and that we approved last September. So thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to thank you for the reminder. I just paid my tech fee.
As you were talking.
So I got it done.
See, it's super easy and quick to do.
All right. And today, we have Ms. Shore with us from Fox Rothschild, as Mr. Fitzgerald is not able to attend, so welcome, Ms. Shore.
Thank you. I always love coming to see you guys, and I do not have a report tonight.
All right. Well, we still love seeing you, and I will see you at the Western Center in a couple of weeks. So with that said, we're going to move on to what will be the boarding portion of our meeting in two weeks to go through, to see if there are any questions and discussion. So we'll start with section five minutes, A through C. Section six, personnel, of course, we will pull out the job description, letter J, but before we do that, I wanted to see if there were any other questions about anything else And I guess we will also probably pull out letter K, too, to talk about next steps with the superintendent search. But in this case, I'll turn it over to Dr. Scanlon to see which would you like to start with.
Sure. We can start with the job description. Let's begin with that one, since that's next on there. Before we move on, there is an administrative recommendation that Michael Zendeck is supervisor of operations facilities recommending, so he will, I believe he is going to be here for the public meeting, so we'll get a chance to meet him on the 29th. So the job description, and this is, as Ms. Westwood said, was something that we talked about in the finance committee meeting, and it came back, there was a time, I guess, a couple of months ago, the board was looking to take a recommendation from the administration about reorganizing the business office. That did not have enough support to go through for the board, and we currently still have two open positions in the business office. So I have had an opportunity to work with the business office and look at, I mean, the amount of work we have people doing, just because we're shorthanded with a couple of clerical positions in there, we've either got to fill them or take an opportunity here to reorganize the department. The business office has not been reorganized in about 10 years, so we're going back to about 2015, 16. There has been many, many more demands placed on the business office, the size of the budget, the reports that are due with PDE, and it's really requiring a different set of skills for people to manage that. So there's, and again, just kind of looking at all this, it's an opportunity to reorganize positions and, based on some of the demands right now. Also, we're looking at some internal promotions for that, where you might have some succession planning opportunities down the road. But it's something that, again, I've had an opportunity to take a look at that. I think it's wise, when you have positions that are open, and they've had those positions for several years, are they still the ones that you need to meet the demands of a school system in its current state today? And it can happen in many, many departments, whether it's the business office, whether it's the communications office, whether it's the curriculum office. I think all of us, we should be looking at opportunities to restructure based on some of the skill sets that we need. The position is an accounting manager position. The difference in salary is about $27,000. It does not include, I mean, doesn't add another body into the health, you know, healthcare mix, but it's the same number of positions. We're just going to, the accounting manager is going to be one that's going to be a higher level position, different skill sets, I think, are part of today's demand on the business office. Because we have had openings, we have some cost avoidance savings here of about $37,000. So, and since we're probably, by the time we get this person in position, assuming this is voted on by the board at the September 29th meeting, we're probably looking at November, about 25% of the year has gone by, so we have an additional almost $7,000 in savings. So out of the current budget, it is still about a $17,000 cost avoidance, even with that reorganization. Now, we have to adjust the budget for next year. Every week, we send the board, or every month with the personnel report, we send the board positions that we have budgeted, and some are a little higher, some a little lower, and typically, we get some attritional savings throughout all of the personnel items in there. So that, I would recommend the board approve that position and those changes so that we can continue on our way with doing the business that we need to do in the business office. Mr. Fink, have I missed anything on that summary? I know you and I have spent an awful lot of time talking about this.
No, I think you've covered it very well. You know, the details of that plan, of course, have been in the memo three times now, once back in May, once back in June, and then, of course, again, this past weekend. And I think, you know, if, assuming, of course, everybody read that memo, I think the details are in there. I did have the opportunity to talk to Dr. Scanlon very detailed about this, and it seemed to me that, you know, some of the questions that we had back in June, which may not have been satisfied, I think we're kind of there at this point now. One of the questions that came up, as I reviewed that meeting just this past week, one of the questions was, is it an administrative position? The answer is no. Is, you know, how does this impact the '25, '26 budget? I think that was probably the bigger concern because it was actually an add to a budget that we had just approved. But as Dr. Scanlon pointed out, with the, you know, with the open positions that we have currently, the savings that we have from obviously not doing that, now that's increased workload on the staff that's there, which we need to alleviate. But I think that that gets, you know, for this year's budget, I think that gets settled. For next year, of course, we would have to account for that 27, which would probably be more like $28,000 next year if you had increases and that type of thing. But still, again, we're talking, you know, about .02 of our current budget, .02% of our current budget. And then I think the last thing that was brought up in June was, maybe we should wait for the next superintendent to come in to opine. And I think Dr. Scanlon, in conversations we've had, he just said he supports it, he recommends it, and I think it's a good time to move forward with the restructuring plan, considering the budget has increased 40% over the past 10 years. That has increased workload just in and of itself, and then you throw in all the reporting requirements that have changed since that time for PDE, Department of Agriculture, the U.S. Department of Education, so on and so on, not to mention audit requirements that have changed over that time. It's a more professional mix now than it is a clerical mix. That's the problem that we're trying to solve. We're not trying to add bodies, we're trying to get more professional bodies in the role so that Mrs. David Heiser and I can offload some of that higher-level work to higher-level people so that we can do the strategic planning that needs to happen. We've talked about that strategic planning endlessly, you know, at the beginning of last year, plus a possible capital redesign as well that we're talking about and the analysis that needs to go there. So that said, I appreciate the board's consideration.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to the board for questions and or comments. Mrs. Wengarten?
Yes, thank you. I think one of the more impactful points that was made at the finance meeting was reminding us about the strategic work that comes from your department in terms of, now we have a 10-year plan for athletics, now we have this big, broader 10-year plan that takes a look at the entire campus and community and what has to be done in order to maintain those facilities and staff and everything. And I think this position allows our experts to focus on those big-picture things while getting that day-to-day done. So I thought that conversation on Tuesday was really impactful. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Wengarten. Dr. Wright?
Thank you very much, and thank you for all the information that's been provided. I did attend virtually the finance meeting, and of course, I always read the board memo and look at that information. Just a couple of questions, though. Was there a reorganization or restructuring of the department done, or is this, we're just taking opportunity right now to change the job of the description of this one position? Or is it two positions now? Because originally, I think, I think at the June meeting, there was just one, so I'm just curious for information.
Thank you. What we're looking to do is, we're looking to add a position called an accounting manager, which is a higher-level professional to handle, you know, a lot of the analysis. There's a lot of financial reporting and analysis that goes there. The position that we're not looking to fill is called a child accounting position, which is more attendance-related. It's not really a financial accounting position. Does that answer your question, Dr. Wright?
Part of it. So that part I did understand from before. So we're taking the child accounting position, and we are rewriting that job description, and that's going to increase the pay and the requirements. But there had been, I guess I had two questions then. Is there a second position now, two, I think? Oh, there is not a second position. Did you want to take that?
There's one, so to answer the first part of your question that Jim didn't answer, the reorg did not take place yet. That is, the recommendation is to do this reorganization, and part of the reorganization, Jim, you can correct me if I misstate anything, one is not backfilling the child accounting position, two is elevating this accounting manager role, which is a new role. So it's just one new role, non-admin. I get that right, Mr. Fink?
Yeah, you did. So like, if you look at those four positions right now, what you're talking about, currently we have a child accounting position, which we don't feel we need. We have two staff accountant positions, and we have a senior accountant position. So what we're talking about doing is keeping the two staff accountant positions as they are, keeping the senior accountant position as it is, and adding a accounting manager position while not backfilling or filling the child accounting position.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So the, and that was based, I mean, pretty much the same information that we had had before, so I appreciate, just more involved. So the reorganization or restructuring part of that, that you've been asked now, I'm looking at you, Mrs. Westwood, because you chair that committee, that you've asked the finance department now to do, is this something that we're looking to have in place for consideration prior to the next budget, as we move through with our budgeting? Because I, you know, historically, anytime we reorganize, it's not going to save us money. It's going to cost us money, so I'd like to see, I'd just like to know if that's something that's going to be presented as part of the budget for next year.
The answer is, the answer is yes and yes. So the idea is to put this in place this year. So as Dr. Scanlon had said, originally, we saw this in June. Now, the numbers were different because the position wasn't open as long as the child accounting, but we haven't done some backfilling, as Mr. Fink had also shared. So now we're in a position where it is not negatively impacting this year's budget. So, and I know there's a lot of different numbers in here, but the net savings is $17,000 for this budget year. Next budget year, which we're also planning for at the same time, so this is where it gets complicated, we would have to budget for this position. Does that make sense?
That does, and I understand that from when Dr. Scanlon had explained that. My question is, are, where we're doing this now because the administration has assessed and determined that this is what we need to do for the finance department, and I understand that completely. But I thought that I heard in there somewhere that we're also going to look at the entire finance department and do some restructuring or reorganizing of that. Was that something?
No. And Jim, you can elaborate. This was the broader look, from my understanding, and the restructuring. So there's not another restructuring plan for next year, or there's just the one for this year? Is that correct, Mr. Fink?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, typically, like with any organization, any department, you look at the structure of that department, you know, for example, we did it- of that department, you know, for example, we did it 10 years ago, right? So, now, you continue to monitor that department, the effectiveness, the changes that have been made, the new requirements that are put on it, over that timeframe, and any growth, of course, that's gonna, or decline, for that matter, may have an opposite impact. But, so, the idea here, Dr. Wright, is that we're looking to do this reorganization now. We'll, of course, budget for it, as Ms. Westwood just said, for the coming years. And, of course, like any department, we're gonna monitor it going forward, to make sure that, you know, that we're still running smoothly. And I would say, you know, likely, another reorganization wouldn't happen, probably for another, you know, five, seven, or 10 years down the road, as needs change.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
I just had a question, just because, as I always tell people, I went to law school to avoid math, and unfortunately, I have not been able to accomplish that in my life. So, I, in anticipation of this, reread the June 12 memo, I actually rewatched the finance committee in June, read the current memo, and here is my question, because, again, I'm trying to wrap my math, non-existent bringing around it. What I heard is, in June, is it was gonna have an impact to the budget of $27,000. What I heard at the most recent finance committee in the memo is that we have saved approximately $37,000. And, again, I'm gonna use round figures here, because, again, we're gonna simplify this for me. So, if I'm saying we've saved 37,500, and the cost is 27, in my head, that's a net savings of 10. But the memo says we have a net savings of 17. So, I'm trying to figure out how we go from a net savings of 10 to a net savings of 17.
And that's because the $27,000 contemplated putting that plan into place on July 1, and that did not happen. So, we're already a quarter into the year, so a quarter of the $27,000 that would have happened did not. And that would be approximately, what is it, 62, 63, 6,500? So, there's where your other saving goes. So, on top of the $10,000, you add that up, and, again, round numbers, you're at about $17,000.
Okay, and, again, just so I understand too, because I did reread everything, my understanding of the redesign is that you are eliminating a title of a position, but not the person, changing that title's person, and compensating them in line with their new responsibilities. But we still have open, that you plan to fill, the two other accounting positions that still need to be filled, or is that, okay?
Yeah, we currently have two open positions in the business office. We are reorganizing one of those positions to be a more highly paid position with different sets of skills. And we have a second position that we will also need to backfill. If we hired that person tomorrow, we anticipate about a $10,000 savings, but we don't expect to have that all done until board approval, go through the formal process. By about November 1, that's about another $6,500 in attritional, in cost avoidance savings. That's where the 17 comes from.
So, just so I understand, in terms of the overall department, in terms of positions and people, we're eliminating a position and changing a title of a position, so there will be less people in that department? Am I correct about that?
No, it'll be the same number of people in the department.
It's the same number, but different roles. So, I see where it's a little confusing, and Jim, you can maybe clarify. So, we had a child accounting position, we are not backfilling that one.
Correct.
Right? Then we have a new accounting manager position, that's the restructuring role that's on here. That's the one where we're talking about the 17,000 net savings now, because of the timing issue, so between June and November, that delta, why it doesn't add up to Dr. Scanlon, oh, no, Dr. Fink, no, Mr., I mean, there's too many people here. There's like, Mr. Fink's point is because of the timeframe with those couple of months, so that 27,000 becomes a smaller number, because we didn't actually pay someone, because there wasn't in the seat for that period of time, so that's why the number is different. But there's also one other open position, to your point. It's not a restructured position, it's just a position that is open, that we need to backfill in the department.
Normal course.
Just normal, like, somebody left, we need to fill the position.
Right, I guess I'm just trying to get, just at the end of the day, just for simple purposes, how many, are we having less people or more people? Same amount of people?
It's the same amount of people. It's just one of the jobs is changing responsibility, and therefore, also changing in compensation.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, yes, thank you. I just wanna make sure, Dr. Sharma, it looks like Dr. Sharma has a comment or question?
Yes, so, I get everything that's gonna be happening this year. The impact on the budget for next year, given the index that Mrs. Westwood mentioned, is 3.5. I think initially, we were anticipating will be 3.7, with the delta of real estate taxes, the gap that's creating for us, the health insurance going up, this $27,000 is gonna be a big factor that we need to think for the next year. So, not sure if there is a plan for that. I know there is $17,000 that we will save, that could compensate for the next year, but however, the following year, you know, it's something that we need to holistically look at all the departments, not just specifically for finance department, because the memo states that, you know, since 2015, the district has increased 40% overall, the budget and everything else. So, we need to factor other departments as well, that, you know, how are we managing everything in the district?
So, Dr. Sharma, it's Mrs. Westwood, agreed, and I think we're gonna talk about that more, because there's, this is the holistic review that we're doing, and a big bucket, I think we've talked about in a couple of different meetings, is digging deeper into personnel. I mean, we look at that every year, and we're looking at our other buckets, we have our three Ps. But yes, agreed with you, so there's a net savings of $17,000 this year. There is an added cost when you add a position, so, again, that will have to be budgeted and looked at, and holistically, we will continue to dig into personnel. So, I don't know, Dr. Scanlon, if you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, I was gonna defer to Dr. Scanlon. I know, you talk a lot about trade-offs, Dr. Scanlon.
Yeah, I mean, there's always, there's always trade-offs. I know we have some immediate needs, we have some big demands right now in our school district, and with our finance department. And yes, we will have to put, an expense side of our budget will have to go up $27,000 for that. We have some money to offset some of that for next year. To Dr. Sharma's point, yes, we have to plan for that multiple years out. We are looking at all of our staffing needs, we've started that process as well, because it's a much, it's a bigger, you know, bigger concern that we've got to address. I think we're gonna do that, but we also have some immediate needs right now that we need to address.
Dr. Sharma, do you have anything else?
Just one comment, you know, this was, in our last meeting, when we were about to approve this line item, we, at least I, from, speaking from my side, we discovered this was not budgeted. So, in future, if anything is not budgeted in that current budget or the next budget, however we look at things, we need to highlight that, so at least the board and the audience is aware that this is not factored into the budget, and we need to carefully look into that particular item. If it's $27,000 or $27,000, that needs to really look at with a fine lens, so we can make sure that we are prepared to take that action. Thank you.
I agree wholeheartedly with that, with that comment, Dr. Sharma, and if, you know, we need to look at our budget, when we're putting our budget together, and make sure we have money budgeted. I know that in the five weeks that I've been here, we've had some people ask for some things that were not in the budget, and my first question is, okay, what are you willing to reallocate in your existing budget, if that becomes now a priority? And that happens, I mean, sometimes things come up you're not aware of, and you have to shift, shift your priorities. That's okay, but I don't know that we can continue, I don't know, I wouldn't recommend anybody continue to finance things that you don't budget, unless you can reallocate existing dollars. So, we've already started that process, and this is another example of that.
Thank you. Okay, so, again, thank you, everyone, for the conversation discussion, I really appreciate it, and thank you, Dr. Scanlon and Mr. Fink, for, you know, once again, communicating the immediate need that exists within the finance department, but I will also say, there was one thing that we didn't really touch on in finance, but I heard you say it here tonight, which is succession, the longer-term implication of doing this, because, Mr. Fink, as soon as I heard succession, I got a little, like, pain in my heart there. How many more years do you have on your contract? Is it four, five?
There's five.
Five years on your contract?
Yep.
So, we know that time is closing in on us, so, you know, as much as the immediate need is important, it's also important to think about the long-term setting up for success.
Sorry, Mrs. Sharma, can I also kind of reiterate what Dr. Sharma had said about in the other parts of the agenda? It does, will state specifically where that funding is coming from, and I don't know if, we, we'd kind of talked about this, making sure that it always is there, and that's, is that something that kind of falls under the, like, do we have the will of the board, that anytime there are costs, that it states where they come from, you know, if that could be something that we'd add to, make sure it was in the agenda? Because I know, like, with the curriculum and technology, it's always there, and I'm looking under another one here, and it says specifically, it's coming out of the special ed fund.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. This is really coming out of benefits and salary budget line, targeted for the business office, so for the next memo, we'll put that in there. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Okay, if there are no other questions on personnel, we'll move on to Section 7 Finance. See if there are any questions?
Mrs. Herrmanns, I think we had also--
Oh, I'm sorry, let's go back to the superintendent. Yes, there was another item that we wanted to talk about, the superintendent search. We had such good, robust conversation, I was ready to move on. So, let's talk about next steps with the superintendent search.
There is a proposal that the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit initially sent to the board over the summer, and as much as I would love to stay here with Springford for as many, many years as you'll let me stay, you do need to get started with the process to find a permanent superintendent here. And we have not officially taken action. Some people have said, yeah, we think the IU, the IU came in and talked about it. So, there is a new timeline in there that the board should approve officially, so that the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit can go do its search. They've done many, many searches. There is no cost to school districts in Montgomery County, with the exception of whatever advertising fees that are in there, I think it's up to $3,500, but it's, if they even have that many for advertising. A lot of the connections that they have are online advertisements, and certainly word of mouth, which won't cost us anything, but if there is some expenses, there's a little bit in there, but it is not a, not a full-blown $30,000 or $40,000 search firm contract that you would see with some of the, some of the other outside consultants that are doing this. So, that will be on for the board agenda for September 29. Once that is officially approved, we'll reach out to the Montgomery IU. They will start the process, they're gonna, they're gonna need to talk with the board about some dates, to get that started in October. It's gonna take a while to get resumes collected, get interviews set up, coordinate with the board on interview times for candidates, which should bring you to February or March. I think they have a February tentative date or announcement of a superintendent. If you have a sitting superintendent from somewhere, there's a good chance they're gonna have 90- to 120-day hold in their contract, so you need to, you need to have that done if you want a July 1 start, you gotta kind of work back from there. So, that, that new timeline is laid out in there, and that will be for the board agenda for September 29.
So, Dr. Scanlon, there was a question, I think it was Mrs. Westwood brought this up in finance, and I just want to clarify, when we talk about approving and having this on as an action item for next week, if we're approving a timeline, I guess my question is, are we approving a timeline, or are we approving the process and the agreement? Because I worry that if we're approving dates, you know, as we know, that there might need to be some flexibility, are we tying our hands by approving a timeline versus approving the MCIU and the overall process?
It's really the approving the IU for that, but in their proposal, they have outlined a tentative timeline that they wanna follow. Yes, I mean, certainly, it can change. You may, you get through the process, you don't like any candidates, you go out again, and you have to push it back, have to adjust the timeline.
So, it would not require us to come back to the board vote, if we, for whatever reason, decided not to follow that?
It would not.
Okay, thank you.
That comment was, I'm sorry, that comment was actually related to the capital plan.
Okay, well, it applies to this too.
It applies to both, yeah.
Yeah, it applies to both, absolutely.
Mrs. Herrmanns, we could remove from that item, the part that says timeline, and just say, MCIU agreement for superintendent search, if that, we felt that that might be better.
Yeah, I think so, that's good, Dr. Wright.
Yeah, I think that's a good plan, because then you're just approving the agreement itself, and that can change as needed, without you having to bring it back to the board.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Another comment about that, I don't have the timeline in front of me, but did not, did this include the opportunity for community to provide input to the MCIU as to what they would like to see in a superintendent? Great, thank you very much for that.
There's an online community survey that is mentioned in here, that's slated for October, but, yes, it's in--
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions with personnel? Okay, then we'll move on to Section 7 Finance. I'm not hearing any questions, so we'll move on to Programming and Curriculum, Section Okay, seeing as that we don't have any conference or property action items, there is Other Business, Letter A.
Yes, this is an overnight trip for high school girls volleyball. This came up, and this sometimes happens, this trip is actually going to take place before our board meeting, so we can either approve it tonight, or we can, we can put it on the September 29 meeting, retroactive to the date. I believe it's September 19, this is taking place.
So, I would, I mean, I'd like to hear from, like, I have an opinion on this. I mean, I think my opinion is, given that it wasn't listed as an action item, like, I don't know that we would be able to adjust the agenda to allow for an action item tonight. Yeah, so, Ms. Shore?
I think it's gonna have to wait, unfortunately.
Okay. Okay. All right. Moving on to Section 12, informational item, we have tenure as usual, and then, of course, the capital plan timeline, which was mentioned in finance. Dr. Scanlon?
Yes, and this is just information, and we did talk about this in the finance committee meeting, the capital planning timeline, we have started to build our website with information out there, similar to what, what we did with the Spring City project, so that the public can follow along. This timeline has us doing an awful lot of work. We started, already started that process with looking at the four scenarios that were presented back on August 20 to the board from GKO Architects, start costing those out. We're also looking at cost benefits of full-day kindergarten, and some other revenue, possible revenue enhancers there. Dr. Wright, you mentioned charter schools, I hope that bill goes through, $600,000 can go a long way in this district. But there's also full-day kindergarten opportunities to bring back charter school students. We currently have 31 students attending the Renaissance Academy Charter School and full-day kindergarten. We are paying almost $600,000 for those children. We have some special, 12 special needs children in that school, that is about, almost $50,000 per kid for the charter enrollment, that's another $600,000. So, there's opportunities, I think, that we didn't cost that out, we need to cost that out and make some estimates, we're working on that. We're also working on, and we met, I had a meeting today with Dr. Kelly and Dr. Gardi, about some assessment data and some transition. We're also, we're starting to build our internal sites for the benefits of keeping kids longer in your buildings, and looking at some, you know, historical data, and some data trends on when you do that, in addition to that, that whole middle school, because I know the board is concerned, wants to try to reduce transitions in this process. So, there's a lot to this plan. We will, we will schedule a community meeting, we have that scheduled for November 12, that will be at 6 o'clock, to give an update, a progress report, an opportunity for the community to give us some feedback on where we are with that. We will present information to the board, probably a committee meeting prior to that meeting, so that we have some feedback from the board. We can also get, once we get the feedback from the community, we can bring that back to the board as well. So, we have, and that, 6:00 PM, November 12, that will be at the 8th Grade Center, in that auditorium, and then we have one other meeting scheduled for Wednesday, February 11, for community input, and that will be held at the Senior High School building.
Just one note, similar to Dr. Wright's comment for this, because this was my comment from last week, can we consider taking off timeline from this too, because it's a similar type of concern? So, it doesn't matter? Okay, all right, just curious.
I'm sorry, I wasn't using my microphone, so for the community, what I said to Mrs. Westwood was, it's an informational item, we're not technically voting on this, so it's really moot. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, that takes us to Board Comment. Okay, public to be heard. If anyone wishes to speak, please approach a podium with your name and township of residence.
Good evening, Gary Wheaton, Upper Providence Township. Couple things, so, Dr. Scanlon--
Couple things, so, Dr. Scanlon, I credit you with putting this plan together to get the committee involved in terms of the rebalancing, redistricting. Is policy 903 going to be impacted at those particular meetings, is it going to be open dialogue, open Q and A?
You can continue on your comment, and then I'll have him address at the end.
Okay, and then the other thing I do want to address is, I know GKO was in here a month ago, talking about the eighth grade center, mentioned HVAC issues, humidity, ventilation, Dr. Scanlon's been working with me on the backend, just to, to determine, did they actually do a mold study? The answer is no. So my request would be, can we do an independent mold study in the eighth grade center? Because the last one that was done is in 2019. I know that there are some, some issues within that particular building.
Is that, is that the end of your comment, before I turn it over?
That, that's a question, I know, I know you won't answer it because of 903, but I would--
No, as I mentioned, you have three minutes, so get it all out, and I will have him respond at the end if we need to clarify or respond to something.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, thank you, you can take a seat.
Yeah, and Gary, I'm happy to talk to you after the meeting about, about any of those questions, as, you know, as, you know, separate topic. I will clarify, and I did mention this in the finance committee meeting, for the open community meetings for this process, they will, they will not be subject to, it's not official school board meetings, so they're not subject to policy 903 public comment, they will be times where we will set up some dialogue with, to get question and answers from the community.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn? Thank you.